September 30th, the year is 2020. This is the Carson City Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting that I've just called to order. Would you please read, call the roll, please?
Chair Boarders.
Present.
Vice Chair Doors. He's, he's present, right?
Present.
Commissioner Eswein.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
Acquariums present.
Thank you. At this time, the public is invited to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda at this time. Yes. Oh, I guess we could. Would you like to lead us in the place of allegiance? Thank you for reminding me. All right, the public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any manner, any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda at this time. And we will also take public comment over the year on any item that is on the agenda. If you, if you have public comment, please identify yourself when you speak and tell us what you're speaking, what, what topic you're speaking on. Is there anyone in, in, on the calling in that has a comment?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
All right. Seeing none is, well, pardon?
Good evening, Commission. I, sorry, I wanted to make one public comment. I'd like you to introduce you. This is a, well, Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record. I wanted to introduce you to our new city engineer, Randy Rice. He's been with us for about three weeks now, so he's starting to get up to speed on all what's going on on our capital project side, but also in our community development side. Randy, we're excited to have him. He comes with a lot of experience, broad experience. He's worked as a design engineer for land development type develop, development projects, so he understands what the applicants are going through. He's also worked on public projects from the private sector side, designing, managing large infrastructure projects. And most recently, he's worked as a public sector, as a project manager, managing large capital projects up north. So we're excited to have him on, onboard, and I'd like you to welcome, welcome to the Commission. And if you guys have any questions, you just have to answer them.
Randy, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Yes, thank you, Randy Rice, for the record.
When he says up north, is it northern Nevada or Washington?
Definitely northern Nevada.
All right.
It's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
All right. You have anything specific you'd like to say?
No, I just, I wanted to say it's exciting to be in front of you all. I look forward to kind of getting up to speed with Dan and then being in front of you here in the near future.
Okay. Well, we're, we're not as bad as we look.
Hopefully, the same goes for me as well.
Thank you, and welcome. Any other comments from the Commission? All right. For possible action to approve the minutes, we have workshop minutes of September 2nd and August 26th, regular meeting minutes. Is there any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I have a correction.
All right.
An addition. On item E9, I'm listed, it says Vice Chair Doors was informed that the conservation reserve districts would allow agricultural use. My question was, my question was specifically, could another crop that has a strong odor, like I used garlic as an example, be grown there? And it kind of seems like a small change, but I kind of already knew the answer. I asked the question to have that specifically put in the record, that another crop could be grown there without any sort of regulation that smelled really strongly and had a strong odor. So however we want to change that verbiage in there, I would like that point on the record, please.
I'll add it to the clarification. I'll make a clarification.
Thank you, Tamara.
You bet.
All right.
Thank you.
Is that okay now? With that addition, is that all right? Is that what you were looking for? Commissioner Doors?
That is what I was looking for. That's, that's perfect. Thank you.
All right. All right, would that change to the August 26 minutes? Can I get a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Who's, who's a mover? Oh, there he is. Mr. Eswein, is there a second?
A second.
All right. Mr. Tingle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine.
Workshop.
Although we did them together. I'm sorry. All right, now, can I have a motion to approve the workshop minutes of September 2nd?
They're moved.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Eswein. Is there a second? Okay. Commissioner Tingle, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain. Commissioner Doors, for the record, I abstain.
All right, thank you. Modification of the agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Lee, is there any, are there any changes?
Just wanted, we're going to take all the items in order, but staff can correct me if I get anything, any of this wrong. Item E8, which is the special use permit for the concrete batch plant, is going to be, there's a request for continuance that you have late, late material for the, with that request and a required motion. So if anybody is going to wait for that, you would just want to let them know the applicant isn't going to be on the line tonight, and there's been a request to continue it to the next meeting to get more information on that application.
All right, and when, when that item comes up, we just need to continue it?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll take the item up at that time to take action.
Okay.
To continue it, yes.
All right. Item E1, LU 2020-0022, discussion and possible action regarding a required administrative review of metal storage containers on property zone retail commercial located at 2462 Northgate Lane, APN 002-061-32. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. This is, this special use permit was first approved in 2005 for the placement of a metal storage container. The approval included a condition requiring the Planning Commission review this special use permit for verification of compliance every five years. The container was last reviewed in 2015. The container has remained in the same location in the southwestern portion of the property since the original approval. It has been well-maintained, and no changes are proposed. The container continues to be in conjunction, used in conjunction with the Victory Christian Center. Staff has not received any complaints related to the storage container. As we've discussed with the review of other special use permits for containers, the development standards require the five-year compliance review. However, it does not dictate that the Planning Commission is required to conduct such a review. Therefore, staff is recommending condition eight, which requires an administrative review of the container, but gives the Community Development Director the authority to refer the review to the Planning Commission as well. Staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions included in your staff report.
Okay. Are there any questions for the staff? Is the applicant on the line?
Uh, the applicant is not available. He is out of town. I've reached out to him to see if he was able to participate via phone. He was not. He did not respond. He did request that we potentially continue this if you have any questions for him.
Okay, if, if we, if we go ahead and continue this, then he's going to be expected to accept all of these requirements again? Did he indicate that they were acceptable to him?
He did not. I was not able to get in touch with him after the staff report was released.
All right. So if, if we approve this, it still continued upon him accepting these? All right.
He's the chairman of the Planning Commission, so he probably understands that pretty well.
Okay. All right. In that case, is-
Commissioner Doors, for the record, are there, are there new conditions, or are they all the, the existing conditions?
Now, the new condition is condition number eight, which will allow in five years from now for a administrative review instead of review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, okay, got it, got it. I did catch that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wiggins, for the record, since we are adding this, what type of things would, I guess, the Community Development Director refer this to the Planning Commission for? What would be the triggers? If it's up to the Development Director going forward?
So typically, staff would be reviewing that for compliance like we have, and we currently, with most of these, are reporting them to the Planning Commission, and that is based solely on a condition that's included in the special use permit. So as these come forward, we're, we're trying to modify that condition so that it's reviewed in-house only, because it is typically a fairly minor special use permit. However, if there was something that was severely out of compliance, then we could, the Director could recommend that, that the Planning Commission review it.
Right, and to add to that, as the Planning Commission knows, any appeal of the community, of the Director's decision is appealable to the Planning Commission. So we, you recently had a case with a container at a school site, and there, it was contentious with the neighbor. So if we had a situation where something was contentious, because we do notify the neighbors, and we knew there was opposition from the neighbors, and there was the risk of an appeal to you, to just save people that angst, we might likely just bring it to you instead of putting people through an appeal process.
Okay. For the record, I like it, too.
Okay, any further discussion? We're ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve LU-2020-0022, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the condition of approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, that was seconded by Commissioner Wiggins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. All right. E2, LU 2020-0035, for the poss, for discussion and possible action regarding a required administrative review of metal storage containers on property zone retail commercial located at 3333 North Carson Street, APN 002-392-05. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we have Jeff Herman on the line, too. He is the business owner here.
Okay.
The subject property is occupied by JM Furniture. It's a 1.82 acre site. It's a 1.82 acre site with a 4,302, 43,219 square foot of floor area. In 2005, the Planning Commission approved the special use permit for the placement of three metal storage containers. These containers have remained in the same location on the south side of the showroom, north and east of the parking area, and I have a slide up on the screen that shows you where, where in general those are located. These containers have been maintained, and no changes are proposed. Per Division 1.10.9 of the city's development standards, metal storage containers may be permanently located in a parcel in the retail commercial zoning district, subject to the special use permit. As Heather just explained in the previous item, these storage containers are subject to review every five years for verification of compliance with the requirements of the SUP and the municipal code. In this case, staff has reviewed the seven required findings, and we are recommending approval of the special use permit, based on the ability to make those findings in the affirmative and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Like the item before this, we are recommending that the Community Development Director be allowed to administratively approve it at the five-year review, as opposed to requiring a review by the Planning Commission. And as I mentioned, Jeff Herman is on the line, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? You said the applicant is on the line?
Correct.
Have you, have you reviewed the eight conditions of approval, sir?
Hi, Jeff Herman here for JM Furniture. I have.
All right, and you understand the implications of item number eight? Which is the-
I do, I like that.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Okay. You have anything further to add, sir?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Commissioner Perry. Mr. Herman, I just had one question. Do you have any electrical or utilities hooked up to these three trailers?
Uh, the three storage containers, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, is there a motion?
I have a motion.
All right.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Doors?
Okay. I move to approve item LU-2020-0035, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff reports.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Perry, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item number three, LU 2020-0023, and do we take these two together? For the discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to modify the municipal well site by adding an emergency backup generator on property zone single-family 2100 planned unit, planned unit development located at 4669 East 5th Street, APN 010384-08, and discussion and possible action regarding a request for a major variance from the front setback from, of five feet to where the 20-foot north front setback is required, so as to accommodate the emergency backup generator on property zone single-family 2100 planned unit development SF21-P located at 4669 East 5th Street, APN 101-384-08. Hope?
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to be a little longer on this one.
Let the, let the record show that Commissioner Preston is now present.
Okay, thank you.
If she can fight the maze to get in-
Oh, no, be careful. She got to her seat safely. Okay, the applicant is, as the chair announced, the applicant is seeking to install emergency generators, but it's actually, it's at three different well sites. I'm going to speak to just items E3 and E4, but I'm going to give an overview of E5 and E6, and when I get to those items, I'll be referring back to this background for the record, so I won't be repeating myself. So the applicant is seeking to install emergency generators at three well sites in, in the city. In the case of the subject well site, the applicant is also requesting a variance to allow a five-foot front setback where a 20-foot setback is required. In each case of the three wells that are coming up on your agenda today, based on the subject zoning, a well use is a conditional use requiring a special use permit. In each of the three cases this evening, the municipal well exists, and the request is for a modification to the special use permit to allow for an onsite emergency generator. I want to speak for just a minute about being a landowner versus being a regulator. In this case, the Board of Supervisors represents the landowner. The Planning Commission is a regulatory body. So as a landowner, the Board of Supervisors, at its meeting of August 17, 2017, yeah, August 17, 2017, voted five to oh to submit a grant application to the Nevada Division of Emergency Management for emergency generators and booster pumps as part of the hazard mitigation program. The scope of this grant, as approved by the board, was for purchase and installation of four emergency generators in order to provide backup power to critical well facilities in one lift station. The location where these generators were proposed in the grant was 1881 Winnie Lane, which was approved, that special use permit was approved by the Planning Commission in July 2020. The subject property at 4675 East 5th Street, and the two items that you have coming up on the agenda, 603 Marsh Road and 2201 West College Parkway. So just to reinforce what I just said, the board, as a landowner, has requested that its staff pursue these improvements on this site. Because of the zoning district, considering a municipal well to be a conditional use, this is a modification to the municipal well, so the Planning Commission is looking at this modification to the special use permit and considering the seven required findings of fact. Okay, this well site is on a 3,600 square foot easement, that's approximately 60 by 60. The site is improved with two small buildings, one which houses the well and one which houses the equipment. The well site is in front of a lot and is visible from the road, and I do have a site plan up on the board. The proposed generator will be 18 feet, seven inches long, so quite long, six feet, eight inches wide, and eight feet, 10 inches tall. The well site is a 3,600 square foot easement, again, approximately 60 by 60. If there was a power outage that affected this well, it would impact water service to 28,701 people as well as businesses. So as we talk about every meeting, when you consider the special use permit, you're considering the seven findings of fact. Staff has reviewed in the staff report the seven required findings of fact. When this application came in, my immediate concern was noise, and what was going to be the noise of this generator? I recognize that they were utilizing a cabinet to buffer the noise, but with that, you're still looking at 70 decibel levels measured 23 feet from the source. At this particular site, if you had a chance to go by there, it is single-family residential, is purely residential. So as part of the operations, the property owner plans to test the generators for 30 minutes, one time a week. So for 30 minutes every week, there will be a decibel level, not for the entire 30 minutes, because you have start-up and, and shutdown time, but you will, for a period of time, have a decibel level of 70 dB, which is essentially the sound of a vacuum cleaner. So in order to ensure we can make finding two, which talks about the use not being detrimental to the peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood, and will cause no objectionable noise, vibration, fumes, odors, dust, glare, or physical activity, staff is recommending a condition of approval that the testing of the generator be scheduled for mid-afternoon on a weekday. Staff's opinion is the ambient noise will be louder at that time of day, as opposed to in the mornings, or in the evenings, or on the weekends, when people maybe are trying to enjoy their outdoor spaces. So if it coincides with a louder ambient noise, it will be less noticeable, is, is the staff's opinion. In terms of the variance, we don't look at variances very often, so I'm going to go a little bit in-depth on this. When we consider variance, we're considering three required findings of fact. So the special use permit has seven required findings of fact, the variance has three. The first of these three says that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including the shape, size, topography, or location of the surrounding, and the strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the subject property privileges enjoyed by other properties. As I've told you, the easement that houses this well site is approximately 3,600 square feet. In this SF21 planned unit development, the setbacks assume a 21,000 square foot property. This easement is 17% of the size of the minimum lot size for this zoning district. Additionally, the location of the existing buildings limit the location of the generator on site. So staff does find that there are special circumstances applicable to the size of the property. For the second finding of the three findings for the variance, the Planning Commission has to find that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights of the applicant. The applicant is responsible for the provision of water to protect public health and safety. In the case of a power outage, the provision of water to 28,701 people plus businesses may be threatened, thus sacrificing health and safety. The generator will improve the reliability of the water system, consistent with the applicant's responsibility. The applicant is also responsible for providing wastewater collection and treatment. Per the state law, the applicant must provide backup power to all sanitary store, lift station facilities, and water pumping facilities. Right now, there's a, there's, the Riverview Lift Station is right there in the median on 5th, if you had a chance to travel slightly east from the subject property towards the park, and that lift station currently has a generator located in the median. That generator is near the end of its life. So the idea is this new generator would also support the Riverview Lift Station generator, which would be consistent with state law, as well as ensure the reliability of that system. So for those reasons, staff does find that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights of the applicant. The third of three findings talks about that the variance will not adversely affect health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the subject property, and will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially injurious to property in the neighborhood. On this one, I immediately thought about the noise, and I've already spoken to you about the noise as part of the finding number two for the special use permit, and I believe that if the testing is scheduled for weekdays, mid-afternoon, the noise will blend with the ambient noise of the community. So I believe finding number three for the variance can be met in the affirmative. So I am recommending approval of both the special use permit request and the variance request, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Dan, this will take two separate actions, just to be clear, it's two separate items and two separate sets of findings. Dan Stuckey, the Assistant Public Works Director, Darren Anderson, the Project Manager, and Eddie Quagliari, the Water Manager, have all joined us this afternoon to speak on this application, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hope I get it, I give up. Do we, well, do them one at a time, or we want to talk about both of them together?
However, if it's easier to talk together, it's however the Commission chooses to. I will just ask that, as you review the findings, when you reach your conclusion, we have two separate actions.
Okay. Is the applicant?
Would you like me to give, Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, would you like me to give a little more background? I know we, we issued a letter as late material, but I think kind of on the history of these grant pursuits and why we think they're important, I think that might be beneficial.
I think I've already given up. I, I understand, I understand what happened, so that's all right.
Okay.
Unless someone else would like to, to be schooled like I have been, it's all right. All right. Commissioner Eswein?
Other than cost, is there any reason why that, why a generator like this can't be put in a vault underground?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons. From a maintenance standpoint, they're, they're much more difficult. There's confined space entry, which adds a whole nother burden on our staff and safety issues. Cost is, is a consideration as well. And then, when you put stuff below ground, I mean, there's just other issue, I mean, groundwater impacts, those types of things, so it's just not, it's not something we, we do on a typical basis, it's not preferable for the city, for those reasons.
I was just thinking that, given that close proximity to residential uses here, that, that might have been a possibility, but I understand what the issues are. Thank you.
Commissioner Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one comment and one question. My one comment is that, on the agenda title here, it says 4669 East 5th Street. There's actually an address on that building of 4675. 4669 is a residence next door to it.
I can speak to that, Mr. Chair. There's an ad- There's an address for the benefit of 911 responders, but since it's an easement, it's not the real property, our noticing is from the real property, so if anyone were to search for the real property, and that's the boundary we're using for noticing purposes, so we use the parent track and not the address of the well site.
Thank you, there's another one that's similar, now I, now I understand.
Exactly, we didn't use the address that was assigned to the facility that's located in the easement, because our noticing is required to be from the real property, not the easement.
I also noticed there's no mailbox there, so I figured that was it. So, Mr. Stuckey, so did you, did you look at the configuration? It's a pretty small piece of property of, of options that you had for this building, because the only, the only real concern I have is it's six feet from the sidewalk, and it's eight feet tall, and it's kind of, kind of stick-out, and if a kid's riding a bike and goes off course, he's going to hit it. So, was there any other, any other configuration that would have fit?
Yeah, so we did look at every possible option, as you can see there, the, the site is pretty, pretty confined and tight, so there's limitations just with what we're, we're given to work with. The generator orientation, we looked at that, but there was no way to fit it any other way that would work. In the backside, you know, there's the wellhouse and the two buildings there, and then in the back, there's, there's some space. But, to put it back there, first of all, to construct it back there would be a challenge, but also, from an access standpoint, you know, for service calls, fueling, those types of things, it was not preferable. Additionally, there's a bunch of water components that are running, you can't really see them, you know, above surface, but a lot of piping that's running there, but that all had to be relocated. So, when you take all of that into consideration, this was really the area that we had to put it.
You're going to have to dig up the AstroTurf.
Yeah.
So, is there, is there any thought or any concern from, from your standpoint with regards to the safety of, of having that building six feet from the sidewalk? Any mitigating factors, or do you concern yourself with that, really?
That's a good question. I think we're comfortable with as far as, well, I mean, vehicles are obviously a concern, we feel like it's set back enough, and it meets, you know, the Clear Zone type requirements that we look at from a transportation aspect. I think you mentioned, you know, bicyclists and those things, riding on a sidewalk or whatever, you know, you know, I'm not an expert on that kind of clearance, but I, I feel like it is enough that we feel comfortable with the location.
Okay. Thank you.
Could, could, could I ask you a question about the lift station?
You may.
Does that generator get run once a week?
It probably does not.
I'm not sure it would run once a week.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're, it's definitely seen its better days. We're, we do have, you know, we're trying to get into more standardizing testing, because obviously it's important, you want to make sure when you need it, it's going to work, right? So, but to answer your question, I doubt we're, I don't know off the top of my head, I doubt we're testing it that frequently.
All right, well, if, if you're going to connect this new generator to both the pump station and this lift station, you're going to have to run a conduit. It would seem to me that the best place, so that you don't ruin the AstroTurf and the, and the, the look, which is not bad, where that wellhouse is, is to put the generator down there where that old one is. And you're going to connect them both anyway, you're going to run the conduit anyway, and it's encased and enclosed, and it's quiet, and it doesn't look as bad as what's there now, I would think that that would be a good solution.
So, we actually, we, we looked into that as well. This generator is much bigger than, I mean, it's bigger than the generator that's out there today, because it's powering those two sites, obviously. It's not best practice to have equipment in a center median, for a lot of reasons. One is safety, I mean, vehicle hitting a generator, you're putting it right there, right adjacent to traffic, that, you know, the, the traffic that would go along there. So, safety, from a maintenance standpoint, you're shutting down lanes when you're servicing it, it's not ideal. So, we looked at that, and, and you mentioned from an aesthetic standpoint, we actually had some discussions long ago with some of the neighbor residents, asking preference, locations, aesthetic impacts for them, and everybody that we talked to was very much against us putting it in the median. So, based on that feedback, and those other safety concerns, that's why we have looked at this site and, and decided on this location.
But even, even if you remove the generator, the lift station apparatus is still in that median. There's still a traffic hazard there, if you're, if you want to use that. And it just, I, I don't know, I just, if you think about, you know, that if, and you can't see it on the picture, on the overhead that you show, but that next generator is just right there. It's in the next piece of median. And when I was out there, they had, you had all your trucks parked right there across the street in the median, so that they weren't, you had three or four trucks out there today, they were doing some maintenance on it, I'm sure. But, it just, it just seemed like if we're putting too much stuff in a very small space, and we have space in other places to put it, it just seems to me to be a better decision. That's all.
I hear, I mean, I, from our perspective, it's not as preferable as the location, for the reasons I mentioned, but.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Wiggins, for the record. I, I was surprised it said weekly, because we test our generators monthly on a schedule. Is that recommended by the manufacturer, or is that something we're doing to be proactive?
So, best practice is weekly. And I think that's what we strive to do, I mean, but, you know, I, I think monthly is probably, in, in, in a lot of instances, probably okay, but we, we strive for that weekly testing, just because we want to be ready.
One, one final question for me. The, the gas tank, it's down in the frame of the generator underneath, is that not correct?
Yes, so it's Darren Anderson from the city, for the record. The gas tank is on the, the lower portion of the generator.
Yeah, it's, it's down, almost wrapped around the frame of the, that supports the generator, or is it on the bottom side?
It's the bottom side, it's the base of the generator.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Mr. Perry?
Yes, and that's diesel, not gasoline, right?
Correct, yeah, it's diesel.
And, and one other question, and I know I'm getting into the weeds, but having had to do, just like Commissioner Wiggins, testing on equipment, when you fire this thing up, do you put it under load, or you just fire up the gen set and see if it runs?
We do put it under load, and we typically try to time it when the well's running, so that it's going to see that same load that it would, when it would need to be used for the emergency backup situation.
Thanks.
All right, any further questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, guys.
I've just got a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, for the record, Commissioner Doris, I, I was thinking along the same lines as Commissioner Wiggins in that weekly testing, and I think it may be worth it to look into the manufacturer's suggested testing protocols, considering that noise is our main concern. I mean, I don't think it's the end of the world, it looks like we had no public comment on this, so it's not like the neighbors seem super concerned. But certainly, if the manufacturer recommends monthly testing, or even bimonthly testing, I don't see a need to test it every week. I mean, I understand we strive for that, but that can also be detrimental, especially if they recommend testing at, at longer intervals. So, I don't know, maybe, maybe we could look into that, you know, as opposed to just firing it up every week.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, we'll absolutely look in the manufacturer's recommendations on that, and we can, we can adjust accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey.
You're welcome.
All right, is, is there any further discussion? How about a motion on item E3?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve LU 2020-0023, based on the ability to make the required findings, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second? Commissioner Swan? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Number four, variance 2020-0003. Now, a motion for that item?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve variance 2020-0003, based on the ability to make the required findings, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No? Motion carries. I just think there's a better place for it, that's all. All right, E5, LU 2020-0024. Discussion on possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to modify a municipal well site by adding an emergency backup generator on property zone public regional, located at 2201 West College Parkway, APN 007, 521-01.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make all the background information on the last item, a part of this record. Having said that, this well is located on the eastern edge of the campus. I'm sorry my arrow didn't show up in the staff report, so sorry if you didn't find it easily. This public is zoned, this property is on public regional, and municipal well is a conditional use. The proposed generator will be nine feet 4 inches tall, 6 feet 9 inches wide, 14 feet 10 inches long. Again, I'm focused on finding two. If you had a chance to go out there, you'll, you saw the fence, and you saw the backyard of the residential area. So, when I went out there, that was my immediate concern, and my concern was the impact of this noise on those residents, who currently have a pretty quiet backyard. I will mention that the applicant did meet with each of the neighbors, each of the four neighbors, whose property is in the vicinity of this well site, and none of those neighbors had objections to the application. Finding two, just to recap, talks about that will adversely affect neighboring properties in the neighborhood. So, again, that residence is right on the other side of the fence, and the fence is 27.6 feet from that generator. There is a six-foot solid wooden fence that runs along the property, and there was landscaping on the neighbor's side of that fence. I did discuss with the applicant installing landscaping on the well side of the fence, or the college property. That's not feasible for two reasons. One, it's outside their easement, but probably more importantly, there's a lot of utilities underground there that they need access to, so they can't landscape on top of those utilities in that easement. Similar to what we had on the earlier item, 23, measured 23 feet from the source, will generate a noise of 71 dB, which is about the, the sound of a vacuum cleaner. Scheduling is, is scheduled for once a week, so I am again recommending that the scheduling for testing be weekdays, mid-afternoons, when there's more ambient noise than early in the morning or in the evening. I have gone through all the seven findings of fact necessary for the special use permit in the staff report, and I have been able to make those findings in the affirmative. Dan Stuckey, Darren Anderson, and Eddie Quagliari are present, representing the applicant, and I'm happy to go more in-depth or answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Dan, you have anything other to say about this? Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we can proceed on. There's a motion?
I move to approve LU 2020-0024, based on the ability to make the required findings, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, you are late.
Ah, crass.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And, where are we, last but not least, discussion on possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to modify municipal well site by adding an emergency backup generator property zone public community, located at 603 Marsh Road, APN 001, 010021-43.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm making my introductory comments from items E2 and E3, part of this This well is located on the eastern edge of the park, if you had a chance to go to the site. This property is, as the chair said, zone public community, and the municipal well is a conditional use. The generator will be nine feet 4 inches tall, 6 feet 9 inches wide, 14 feet 10 inches long. In staff's opinion, this is a very isolated location surrounded by open space. I am not concerned about what time they run the testing, because it is very isolated, and also slopes down away from the resident, residences across the street from the park. So, I really am able to make all seven findings in the affirmative, without any conditions beyond those that are required per code. I'm happy to answer questions. Eddie Quagliari, Darren Anderson, and Dan Stuckey are here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? Any comments from the applicant? All right, I'll bring it back, we have a motion, please?
Silence is golden.
Commissioner Preston, would you like to do something?
Certainly. I move to approve LU 2020-0025, based on the ability to make the required findings, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number seven. Discussion on possible action regarding a request for a special use permit for residential use on property zone retail commercial located at 421 South Carson Meadows Drive, APN 004-113-14. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Ferris, Associate Planner, for the record. The applicant is proposing a duplex on a 0.22 acre parcel, zoned retail commercial located at 421 South Carson Meadows Drive, just north of its intersection with East Fifth. A residential use in the retail commercial zoning district may only be established upon approval of a special use permit by the Planning Commission and subject to meeting the requirements outlined in Division 1.18 of the development standards. The property is surrounded by both residential and commercial uses. The site is just north of an existing laundromat, east of a multifamily apartments, and west and south of office and personal storage facilities. Other uses in the surrounding area are predominantly residential in nature. The larger of the two units is proposed to be approximately 1,762 square feet and includes three bedrooms, two baths, and a two-car garage. The smaller unit is proposed to be approximately 1,128 square feet and includes two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Parking for the smaller unit will be via two uncovered parking spaces in the driveway. A single-car garage will also be provided for the smaller unit. Each unit will have private rear yards, which will provide more than the required open space. There will also be common open space areas in the front yards to increase that open space area. The staff report contains a detailed analysis of how the application meets the standards outlined in Division 1.18, including the supplemental findings, of which two of the four must be made in addition to the seven required findings of fact for approval of a special use permit. Staff was able to make all seven findings in the affirmative, including the supplemental findings A and B, and is recommending approval of the special use permit, subject to the five conditions of approval, which are included in the staff report. The applicant, Mr. Trong, is participating remotely and may wish to address the commission, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Is Mr. Trong on the line?
Yes.
Sir, have you read the conditions of approval that the staff has provided us? And are they acceptable to you?
Yes.
Would you have anything further you wish to say?
No.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Nope? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bring it back to the commission. Is there any discussion? It took like a good use of this piece of land to me. Motion? Commissioner S. One?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve LU-2020-0032 based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
All right. Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah. All right. Item E8. Discussion on possible action regarding a request for a special use permit for a concrete batch plant and rock crushing operation with silos exceeding the 45-foot height limitations on property zone general industrial airport located at 4,500 Ryan Way, APN 005-0072-006. And Heather, I understand they have pulled this item for consideration?
They have requested a continuance to the October 28th meeting. Do you have a memo in front of you?
Yep.
From staff?
Is that the action we need to take? All right.
Yes, it is.
All right. Commissioner S. One?
Mr. Chair, I move to continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of October 28th, 2020.
All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tingle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
All right. And lastly, discussion on possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for retail sales and product production utilizing vinyl printing, computerized number control cutting, and powder coating on property zone retail commercial and general commercial located at 220 East Williams Street, APN 002-155-06.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I believe Tommy Purnell is joining us remotely.
Okay.
The subject property is located on the north side of Williams Street between North Plaza and North Fall. The property is split zoned retail commercial and general commercial. The applicant is seeking to establish a business that involves installation, fabrication, and coating utilizing vinyl printing, computer numerical control cutting, and powder coating. So it's kind of interesting because you've been going through Title 18 and the use tables, and what we have to do is sometimes you get a use that isn't easily described in our use tables. So what we have to do is look at the use tables or the uses are identified in Title 18 and identify what use best describes this thing that the applicant's trying to do. In this case, staff finds that the use that can best be described, this use can best be described as like an automobile body repair and painting, which is a conditional use in the general commercial zoning district. Therefore, a special use permit is required. When the notices went out, the staff did receive two phone calls from neighboring property owners. One was regarding an outdoor generator that had been on the property, and the person who contacted staff found it was disruptive to the neighborhood and other businesses in the neighborhood. I have spoken with the applicant, and he indicated that was just a temporary repair going on, and there is no interest in having outdoor equipment as part of this use. So staff, based on finding number two, has included a condition that there would be no outdoor equipment. Additionally, staff heard from another resident in the area who was concerned about fumes and vapors. Staff followed up with NDEP on that concern and verified that NDEP would take jurisdiction on this use, even if it was below the threshold of permitting for NDEP, NDEP would still be the enforcement agent. So again, using finding number two, staff has included a condition of approval that the use must operate consistent with NDEP regulations. I'm happy to go more in-depth on this, but staff has reviewed all seven findings necessary for the special use permit, and I was able to make the findings in the affirmative with the conditions of approval that have been included in the staff report. I do want to point out one other condition staff is recommending, and that's a condition that would prohibit outdoor storage. As you can see on the zoning map, this is across the street from our downtown mixed use and just to the east of the downtown mixed use zoning district. So I think it's really important if our uses are adjacent to the downtown that they transition nicely with the downtown and not feel like an industrial area. The applicant and I discussed this requirement, and it sounds like this isn't problematic in terms of his operations.
Is or is not?
Is not problematic.
Thank you.
But he is on the phone, and with that, I'm happy to answer questions or again go more in-depth if the commission would like.
Are there questions for staff? Is the business open now?
I have a question.
Commissioner Dars, go ahead.
Well, that was my first question, was is the business open now? And my second question was, just to be clear, I mean, you pretty much answered all this, but just to be super clear, there's nothing going to be outside, and there's no smell or excess noise that this guy's planning on coming from this business, it sounds like. Is that correct?
I believe the applicant has occupied the building already, but he does not have his business license yet because he required the special use permit. He is looking forward to gain his business license, so I have been by the side. I believe he's occupied the building, but I don't know that he's conducting business in the building. I believe he's waiting on that. In terms of will there ever be anything outside the building? Can he park a car outside the building? Yes, he has a parking lot. He can park cars. He could, we talked about if he had something he was working on and he brought it outside temporarily and then brought it back in the building. Something like that I would not count as outdoor storage. He's not storing it there. He brings it out just for a short period and brings it in. And so we had that level of discussion. But no, there shouldn't be any fumes, there should not be vapors, there should not be noises outside the building. It should, all the operations should be enclosed in the building, and it should be rare that you see the activity outside other than activity you would see at any business.
Okay. Thank, I wasn't, for the record, I didn't mean cars, but I meant like operations. But yeah, that answers my question. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for staff? Mr. Purnell, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Have you read the conditions of approval that the staff has presented us? And can you accept those?
Yes, I have.
Can you accept those?
Yes.
Do you have anything further you'd like to state or say?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's bring it back to the commission. Is there any further discussion or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if we're ready for a motion, I'll give one.
Go ahead.
I move to approve LU 2020-0034 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
All right. Is there a second? Commissioner Preston?
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Staff report. Mr. Plummer?
All right. Good evening. Haven't had a chance to talk too much tonight yet. Yeah, just to go over a few things that have been before the Planning Commission or of interest. Back in, at the Board of Supervisors on September 3rd, it was on the schedule for them to review Title 18, the chapters 1802, 03, and 04, which you had previously agendized, but they had a large agenda and ran out of time, and it was on there, and I got some written comments, but that is, those chapters are going to be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors at their meeting tomorrow, October 1st here in the Sierra Room. And so subsequent to that, we'll take their comments. Eventually, those chapters will again come back to you with their comments and changes and suggestions for final review. And of course, just staying on the topic for a moment, on the Title 18 workshops next Wednesday, the Planning Commission here in this room will be reviewing chapters 1805, which are general provisions and Division 1, which is the developments, of the development standards, which is land use and site design. We have, so between those two, we'll definitely have two hours worth of discussion to talk about, and if we need more time to continue a discussion on any of those chapters after that, we'll just do that and schedule it for the next month. But we were unable, we had some people, I've been out of the office, some others were out of the office, so we were unable to get the packets ready for you tonight. I don't have the paper copies for you, but tomorrow morning, the packets will be available online and available to pick up, or you can let us know if you need one delivered to your house, but they'll be ready first thing tomorrow morning. Again, and to the public and anybody else who wants to see those chapters, anything the board's reviewing tomorrow, anything that you're reviewing next week. The website is carson.org/Title18, and that's where we're putting all of the documents with the amendments. I now have documents that show, that just summarize the substantive changes that are in each one, and that'll be, those will be part of the packets, of the chapters you're reviewing tomorrow, too, so that might just kind of hopefully assist a little bit in our discussion, although we'll certainly go through the whole chapters with you. Just for some information, we had a couple of storage containers on your agenda tonight reviews. At the Board of Supervisors on September 17th, they adopted a temporary COVID emergency ordinance to allow storage containers administratively during the emergency. And just a little bit more background on that, anybody in a commercial district can use a storage container up to 90 days with administrative approval and subject to all the same standards that are required pretty much with the special use permit generally. So, but because we're, because the city is requiring, and the governor's orders are requiring people to basically move some stuff out of their restaurants and things and make space during the emergency, we're allowing them to use the temporary storage containers for that during that, just during that period. We've only had two businesses take us up on that so far, so if you see them, and I've just mentioned it, Glenn Eagles, again, making, and Gold Dust West, both making room within their businesses to meet the separation requirements. And for next month, for the Planning Commission regular meeting on October 28th, I anticipate that meeting will be in the theater next door to this room, still be in the community center here, but at the theater. It's a larger room. The governor, I think we're still sorting out the new governor's restrictions and the raising on the number of participants. That probably helps with the public's ability to be attending these meetings and still maintaining social distancing and being in the theater where there's more room, and IT's getting that room set up for all the same video conferencing and everything ability there. So that's going to be, that's going to be where we're going to be for the rest of this year, probably, while they are redoing this room. I'm not sure exactly what this room's going to look like, but they're redoing this room in here. New, again, with the IT things, and I think some things with the DIAS and separation for, between commissioners for safety and those types of things. And then, and so next month, yeah, we're going to be in there. We have four items on the agenda so far, including the special use permit that was continued tonight. So in addition to that, there's additional signs, special use permit for additional signs at Carson Hills Apartments. I think they have two frontages, just to, they're allowed one sign, they're going to have one, an additional sign on one of the frontages. A special use permit for a barn on Center Drive residential, which is a special use permit for accessory structure exceeding 75% of the primary residence, and then an expansion of a conditional use on, at 2016 South Admin's Drive. I believe that's a limited industrial use and property there. Anything else to report? Oh, and on that agenda, right, is going to be the, and yeah, the required review of the Tahoe Western Asphalt Special Use Permit. And I forget if, I don't think as of last month I had this report, but that, as far as I know, as of today, their permit from NDEP is revoked, and they have not been operating for about the last, last few weeks, maybe up to about a month, three or four weeks. And so that will have more information in October for you.
What is the, what was the reasoning behind the revoking? I mean, it kind of seems obvious, but just to be clear, why did the NDEP revoke the permit?
Lee, this is Ben. I think probably we should hold that discussion until next meeting.
Yeah, I think so. I'm kind of wondering if, yeah, before we release any information that's not public on the details of it, I'm not sure through NDEP, but I think any of the public that's called NDEP, it's public information that they're not, they're not operating right now, and if they are operating, we're calling, we're calling NDEP and letting them know if, and if somebody, and if we're getting complaints, we're calling NDEP and letting them know.
Great.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
The workshop's at 3:00, correct?
Yes, and the workshop on Wednesday, October 17th is at 3:00 PM here in the Sierra Room.
Okay. Commissioners' comments or reports? Lee, I just have one on, you know, we're moving to administratively approve these extensions on metal storage containers. It seems to me that if, as long as they become administrative, if there would be some sort of a license or a tag or a sticker that you could put on a container that says, this is the date it was approved, and it lasts for five years, that's, it does two things. Number one, it's a small income source if you charge a hundred bucks for the sticker, but more importantly, it would identify those storage containers that do not have a special use permit that are all over town. And it just, it just seems like to me, as long as it's becoming administrative, you could almost do the same thing with the billboards. You know, a five-year administrative approval, and on your approval, you put a, we put a sticker on it, and it's good until five years, and then we can put another sticker on it, unless there's a reason for the commission to look at it. And I don't know all the mechanics of that, but it seems like that's, that may be a good way to administratively keep track of everybody, because if they've got a sticker, it's got a number on it, and we know where it belongs.
Yep. Good suggestion. We'll think about that, and, you know, I think just, just having our systems, you know, new systems in place where the computer and tickler files and things, just, just being able to put it in our newer systems and tickler files, just knowing it's coming up is a benefit. I mean, whether it comes to the Planning Commission or us, we know with, you know, ideally, we have our new GIS-based systems that aren't working as well, aren't as GIS-based as we had hoped they would be in terms of clicking on things and finding out the latest, but I think there, I think there's ways for us to.
And the other thing is.
A sticker's a good idea for the enforcement out there.
Yeah, if it's not visible and enforcement drives by and sees it, then we know that it's not, it's not permitted.
Right.
And it technically should be.
But again, they have, they now have their iPads in the field, so they can, they should be able to look up if.
Okay.
That one as well, so, but it's a good suggestion.
All right. Mr. Chairman? Yes.
So, we're in reports from the commissioners. Wow, what was that? Something squealed. I just had a.
Oh, that was my daughter. I apologize.
I just had a couple of comments. I have to say, I learned something about going around and visiting all these well sites in the, in the last couple of months here, but when I visited the one that's on the WNC College Campus, right next to it, there's two buses and a parking lot, and the parking lot is the Tesla parking lot, and the two buses dispatch from there every day to take employees to the Tesla plant. I had no idea, so we obviously have a lot of residents that are working at Tesla, and they're getting bused there every day. I see nodding, like everybody knew that. I mean, and they're sitting right next to the well site idling, so, you know, they're there more often. And the other is just, just an invite, Pope Sullivan is going to be the speaker at the Rotary Club, talking about development in Carson City here on the 13th of October, and if anybody is interested in coming to that, I'd be happy to take you as a guest. It's at the Nugget at 12:30, and we do social distance. Thank you.
Or you can do, or you can Zoom it.
Or you can tie in via Zoom.
Yes. All right. Commissioner?
I have one. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Dars, hang on, you're second. Commissioner Preston? Commissioner Preston?
You're all right.
In regards to these wellheads, I discovered one the other day that I didn't know was a wellhead, and it's actually behind the Spectrum over off of North Carson Street. And it needs some severe attention. It's got like a portable AC unit on the outside, and it has a cover on it, and the cover is falling off, but there's also a dumpster that's put in there, a bunch of trash, and it's collecting vagrants, and I'd like to have that addressed, please. No, it's a city wellhead.
Could you give me the?
Truly says it, a city wellhead.
Could you give me the address? I'm not sure where you're in.
Sure. I'll give it to you. Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Dars?
Just to kind of touch back to the administrative handling of the storage container stuff, is it, just so I'm clear on the process, are these people receiving a permit from administration, or is this some sort, I mean, it seems like it's lasting for five years, the approval, so is it something different, or are they actually receiving a special use permit?
No, I think if you're referring to the temporary ordinance that was adopted for during the COVID emergency declaration, that requires a permit, and actually, as the code is currently written, again, in commercial areas, it's permitted up to 90 days with a permit, with an administrative permit from the planning department, and there's a permit and requirements for that, and they come in and get that. You don't see these in industrial areas because it doesn't require, it doesn't require a special use permit in industrial zones. So they're there, but that doesn't mean they don't have a permit. They have, they also have permits from the city for the placement of them in industrial zones, subject to our requirements and approval, and the only ones that are getting, that are coming here are in commercial zones and for more than 90 days. But they all do have to have a permit from the planning department.
I have one question for Lee, Hope, Heather. On the batch plant, should we hold on to the staff report for that, or are you going to issue another one?
We can do another one, but hopefully we collected everyone's books, because we want to hold on to the books that came with it.
You got.
Because the new staff report will have a new date on it.
Huh? Oh, there you took it? Okay.
Okay. The public is invited at this time to come in on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there any comments from the public?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Five minutes.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn for our commissioner. Hope, and seconded by Tingle. Seconded by Commissioner S. One. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I need my.